Meeting to order, we may have some members of Leadership Jackson Class 2014 here. It may have been also rained out this morning, so if you're here, would you just stand and let us acknowledge you all if you're here? Yeah, they're here, good for you all. Give a big hand. Good to have you all here. Well, good morning, everyone. We'll call the October 7th, 2014 meeting of the Jackson City Council to order. We'll ask Councilmember Scott Conger to lead us in our invocation and pledge, and if you would, please rise.
Please pray with me. Father, come before you today, thankful for another day. We ask that you bless this meeting, the decisions that are made throughout the meeting today. We ask that you watch over Jackson and all the citizens, and keep us safe. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Janita, I think you can show all council members present, with the exception of Councilman Randy Wallace. Item four is the approval of minutes on September 2nd, 2014 city council meeting. Councilmembers receive the copy of those minutes, and if there are no additions or corrections, we'll just accept those minutes as submitted. Item five is the invitation for public comment, and if there's anyone present who'd like to be heard on any matter under new business, if you'll let it be known at that time, I'll be happy to call on you and let you speak. We have several proclamations this morning, and I think the first one is pink, we're all turning pink. This is the American Cancer Society, Paint the Town Pink, and if you'll note, I received a couple of pictures on my desk this morning, City Hall being quite pink during the nighttime hours, and we're happy to do that to show awareness to this particular event that you all have, and so, good to have you here. Peggy, let me, I'll present this to you, and then let you introduce your guest, okay? This is a proclamation, whereas Paint the Town Pink is an activity of the American Cancer Society that promotes breast cancer awareness and gives individuals and committees, communities an opportunity to fight back against cancer. Whereas money raised during Paint the Town Pink of Jackson Madison County helps end breast cancer by funding the American Cancer Society's efforts to find cures and support programs and services for all people facing breast cancer. And whereas the American Cancer Society invests more in breast cancer research than any other cancer type, and have played a role in nearly every major breast cancer research breakthrough in recent history. Now therefore, we, Jerry, Guest Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim the month of October, 2014, as American Cancer Society Paint the Town Pink Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens to participate in making strides against breast cancer event to be held October the 18th, 2014, at Jackson General's Park. Peggy, thank you all for what you do, and especially this great awareness program you all have going on. Come on up.
Got several survivors and committee members with me, Ms. Jessie Pruitt, Kim Gibson, Abby Hinton, and then Susan Barker with the Kirkland Cancer Center. So, thank you all again very much, council and mayor and all of the town for embracing this pink month and helping us celebrate these wonderful survivors in a big way. So, thanks again, we hope to see you all out at our pink events. Thanks.
Okay, the next proclamation is Domestic Violence Month, and let me ask Tara if she would come up, or anyone from RAP to accept this proclamation. Nara, I'll present this to you, and then you can introduce the people that are present. Thank you all for being here. This is a proclamation, whereas one in every four women will experience domestic violence during their lifetime, and approximately 15.5 million children are exposed to domestic violence each year. And whereas domestic violence resulted in 288 murder, non-negligent homicides from 2011 to 2013 in Tennessee. And whereas the abuse of a family member can have long-term damaging effects on the survivor that impacts family, friends, and the community at large. And whereas families are indispensable to a stable society and should be a place of support to instill responsibility and values in the next generation. Whereas domestic violence is widespread and devastating to society as a whole, but particularly to women and children. And whereas violence against women and children is a prevalent social ail due to historical imbalance of power in gender and age. Whereas the problem of domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people, but crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers, and is sustained by societal indifference. And whereas the survivors of domestic violence should have help to find the compassion, comfort, and healing they need, and domestic abusers should be held fully accountable for their crimes against persons and against the community. And whereas survivors of domestic violence and their families are encouraged to seek assistance from the Women's Resource and Rape Assistance Program, RAP, to gain access to supportive services so they can escape the cycle of abuse. Whereas important partnerships have been formed along criminal and general justice agencies, healthcare providers, allied professional and victim services to assist victims of domestic violence and their families. And whereas our community has a civic and moral obligation to work to prevent domestic violence, to address its brutal and destructive effects, and to make ending domestic violence a community priority. Now therefore, in recognition of the important work being done by our community to prevent domestic violence, support survivors of domestic violence, and hold perpetrators of such violence accountable for their crimes against the community, we, Jerry, Guest Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim October, 2014, as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to become aware of this destructive force in our society and become part of the efforts to stop violence in families. Y'all, thank you for everything you all do on a daily basis. Thank you.
And I am here with two members of my staff, Mamie Hudson and Bridget Lockett, who work with me every day and with members of our community to bring safety and health to families in Jackson and Madison County. We are grateful for the support of the community, thank you for all that you do, we are making a difference. Women are getting the help that they need and moving forward with their children to safer, healthier lives. Thank you so much.
Okay, our final proclamation this morning is National Night Out, which is tonight. Get your umbrella and have a good time. Lieutenant Byron Taylor is here, the Jackson Police Department, who works hard on this program every year, along he and several other members of PD, and let me get this proclamation Baron, then I'll read it and let you tell us all about what's gonna go on. It's a proclamation, whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violent prevention program on October the 7th, 2014, entitled National Night Out. And whereas last year's National Night Out campaign involves citizens, law enforcement agencies, civic groups, businesses, neighborhood organizations, and local officials from over 16,000 communities, from all over the 50 states, U.S. territories, Canadian cities, and military bases worldwide. And all, over 37 million people participated in National Night Out in 2013. Whereas the 31st Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the citizens for City of Jackson to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police-community crime prevention efforts. And whereas the City of Jackson plays a vital role in assisting the Jackson Police Department and the Madison County Sheriff's Department through joint crime, drug, and violent prevention efforts in the City of Jackson, and is supporting National Night Out 2014 locally. And whereas it is important that all citizens of the City of Jackson be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in the City of Jackson. And whereas police-community partnerships, neighborhood safety awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now therefore, I, Jerry, Guest Mayor of the City of Jackson, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October the 7th, 2014, as National Night Out, and urge all citizens to join in supporting this worthwhile event. Lieutenant, thank you for everything you do, and you may want to tell these folks how it's gonna go on.
First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and the chief for allowing us to participate in this program. We have about 27 parties planned, we're gonna keep our fingers crossed, the rain is supposed to get out of here, and I urge you to get out today and support the citizens that took the time and effort to sponsor a party. That shows the cooperation from the citizens with the police department. Just thank you and have a good day.
Item seven is the first readings, and I think we have one, is consideration of ordinance to close and ban an unnamed alley running between 24 and 30 Morton Street, just west of South Highland Avenue. Stand.
Good morning, Mayor and councilmen.
Good morning.
This is a continuation of our efforts to abandon alleys and right-of-ways that are not used by the public, that are unimproved, and to put them back in private ownership where they're not serving a public interest. So, you have the materials pertinent to this abandonment, we have not received any complaints or any negative information about this, so we would recommend its approval to you.
So moved. Second. We have a motion, the second, before we vote, we need to have a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing on this particular ordinance, and ask if anyone present who'd like to be heard in support of or in opposition to the passage of this ordinance. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is, are you voting, Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
Okay. And the vote is unanimous?
Okay, thank you. Item eight is second readings, we have two, consideration of ordinance to close and ban an unnamed alley between Holly Street and Clayton Street, just south of Carol Street. Council passed this on first reading at last meeting.
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion, and second, any discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Item 202, second reading, consideration of ordinance to close an abandoned unnamed alley running south off of Arlington Avenue between Campbell Street and Pleasant Street. Council, again, approve this on first reading at last meeting.
So moved.
A motion and a second discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmen.
Before we get down to new business, at last meeting, we had a resolution which was tabled for 30 days, and I think we're in a position now to deal with that resolution, and I'll accept the motion to remove from the table a resolution, and I'll give you the name right here, a resolution rescinding the commitment to de 5 acres, more or less, located south on Highway 70, bypass between Phillips and Cartwell Street, to Conexions Preparatory School to be used for the establishment of a charter school. I'll accept the motion to remove that from the table.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone that matter indefinitely until...
Okay, why don't we, that's okay.
Mr. Chairman, move, lift the table.
Okay, we have a motion to take that from the table, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, in discussion, council, please vote.
And the motion is approved unanimously?
Okay, in discussion with the organizers of the charter school, they've indicated they would like to have the opportunity to take that to the school board. And in discussion with Southwest HRA, they've indicated that they're still in a work in progress in putting that application together, and they really don't know how long it'll take. If you'll remember the last meeting, they were discussing anywhere from five homes, maybe as many as eight, and we'd like to be able to tie that down, so would they, so they're still putting that application together and really getting Ts crossed and Is dotted, the last part of that application will be the donation of property to them. So, I'll, from this, well, council, I'll stay in contact with them, see how that application is progressing, also stay in contact with Ms. Owens and the other members of the charter school, see how that's progressing, and so, by the time it all comes together, hopefully we'll be in a position to approve that application, depending on the outcome of their petition to the Jackson Madison County School Board, so...
Mr. Chairman, are you suggesting that we're still at an either-or proximity, either-or with the...
Well, I think both of them are, both of them are still, it's a work in progress for both of them. Councilman, the Southwest HRA is still in the, still working on getting their application together to make sure funding is assured for those residences, and once that's done, obviously, they have to complete their application. They think that'll be at least several months before that's completed, and they'll have a green light other than the property donation, which they'll come back and inform us that they're ready to go with the application once the property is donated. So, hopefully, both of those will coincide with that issue being brought before the school board, and we'll go ahead and move on from there. So, I think at this point, since we're talking about a motion that was tabled, that we now entertain a motion just to postpone action on this resolution to a future date. Is there a motion?
I so moved.
Okay, we have a motion, the second, any discussion on that? Okay, council, please vote.
And the vote passes with seven members in favor and one voting no.
Item nine, under new business, is a consideration of a memorandum of understanding, mutual assistance agreement between the City of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jackson State Community College. And we have Major Corley here to discuss that mutual aid agreement. Morning, Major.
Morning.
I apologize, I was not able to attend the agenda review meeting on this, and I know there may have been some questions. This generally is very similar to the current MOU and mutual assistance agreement we have with the University of Memphis at Lambeth Police Services. Jackson State Community College now has their own police force, campus police force, which is certified through the state, and the officers are certified through the post-commission. And this agreement basically outlines our concurrent jurisdiction with them, or just granting them jurisdiction briefly outside of the boundaries of the campus to the streets that are adjacent to the campus, and to the businesses that are there nearby, the convenience stores and the Dollar General and things of that nature, that would assist us in providing police service to those businesses, as well as us providing them assistance should any criminal activity occur on the campus or in their immediate area.
Move to approve the agreement?
Okay, a motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Question.
Go ahead, Councilman.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Is this primarily the same language as the agreement with Lambeth?
It's virtually identical to the same language as the agreement with Lambeth. There's a few changes dealing with the policies that they have there that may be a little bit different as far as the operation of their police department, but as far as the jurisdiction and the processes that go along with that, there, it's identical.
So, did I hear you say that the Jackson State Police would have jurisdiction outside of the college?
They have jurisdiction, if you look at the map that's attached at the end, it's everything that's in green, they have jurisdiction along North Parkway, along Whitehall, and along Effie Wright, to the areas that are noted, and those areas are only like down on Effie Wright to College Park because there's an ingress to their maintenance building at the end of that, and to the location where the mobile home community is and everything is because their property line abuts to that, and they need to be able to patrol their perimeter of their jurisdiction, of their property. So, that's why they have, they won't actively patrol those areas, but they will have access to it.
Okay, thank you.
I had one question.
Yes.
You said these police officers are certified to patrol campuses, are they also certified policemen?
They're certified through the state as law enforcement officers, yes, Mayor.
Okay, any other questions from council? Okay, we have a, we have a motion, a second.
Yes.
Council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous?
Thank you, Mayor. Item two is presentation of 2013, 2014 Community Development Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, Dave Ross with Jackson Housing Authority, and I think council was given an amendment this morning as to what you all want to present. Morning, y'all.
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm gonna let Ms. Faison go ahead and give you all the report this morning, I'm here for questions, just in case.
You're still trying to retire, aren't you, Dave?
Trying my best.
Good morning. I am Latonya Faison with the Jackson Housing Authority. What we have for you all is a presentation of our consolidated annual performance and evaluation report for our fiscal year ending June 30th. We did submit the plan to HUD on September 30th. We held a public hearing September 10th to present the caper to the public, there were no comments, and we did provide a 15-day review period. You all should have the updated summary of the, okay, for the year ending June 30th through our sub-recipient agencies and our three-member staff. We expended a total of $1.1 million and provided housing activities, youth services, fair housing activities, and things of that nature, and we were able to provide 44 households with housing, rehab, or acquisition, and we also provided 815 individuals with services through homeless programs and public services, youth services, housing, as they pertain to our five-year consolidated plan, which we are actually in the fifth year. This report concluded the fourth year of our consolidated plan. Do you all have any questions about the report?
Any questions from council as to the Community Development Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report?
No questions. Been working with Dave a long time, and I appreciate all your hard work.
Move to approval.
We have a motion for approval, and a second, any discussion from council? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Thank you all.
Should've had her do this earlier.
Okay, item three is a contract for a consideration of contract for the asbestos removal and demolition of West Jackson School, located on McCout Street, and Ms. White?
Proposals were received for the asbestos removal and the demolition, and the best price we got was from Mid-South Business Construction for $146,643, and they can begin this week if it stops raining.
Okay, any questions from council as to this particular contract?
I had a quick question, how large is that parcel of land that it sits on?
That's a really good question, and I don't know.
Stan, you remember four or five acres, reaches on down. Look out, you don't look out.
Move for approval.
We have a motion.
Question on the motion, after demolition of the building, is there a future plan for it, the lane?
Not, there's not a plan on the table at this point, obviously, there's a lot of revocation going in that area, and we fully expect, hopefully, that at some point, there will be a plan by those who would like to join in hands with the city to continue to revitalize that particular area. The property will be held by the city and may be transferred over to CRA.
And the latest on the West Jackson Baptist, old West Jackson Baptist Church is still, it turned out on the auctioneer, and it's just still up for sale?
The latest I've heard from the pastor of the Zion Church is that the church in Nashville had approved two, was approved for two construction loans. Number one is to do some renovation to the sanctuary of the old West Jackson Baptist Church, and to use the other part of that for renovation of their existing campus, which is on Old Medina Road. Now, that's from the pastor, and that was about two weeks ago.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we have a motion, a second. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Item four is a consideration of contract for the city's website design and development.
Kayla and William, I believe, are here to explain this.
Kayla?
You want to come up?
Kayla, Young and Associates. Morning.
Good morning.
Do you mind giving us kind of an overview of our contract and what your plans are for our website?
Be glad to.
Which, by the way, since its origination was 1.3 million hits, or visits, something like that.
Exactly. The current website is about 2001, and in the website world, that's pretty old, as far as coding and the way it operates. The contract or the proposal that you have in front of you is for a new city website that would have a content management system that would allow each department to be able to update their own sections and keep it more up-to-date and more current. It would also be able to, excuse me, let me breathe a second. You would also be able to have a little bit more robust sections on some of the sections that are currently, need to be more fleshed out, such as the police department, parks and wrecks, and things like that. The beauty of the site is, it would be responsive design, which is, where any mobile device that you have, you can pull it up on whether it be a tablet, smartphone, laptop, whatever, it would respond to that device. So, each department would have its own section, we would meet with each department head, and therefore, we would be able to create each department a website or a function of the website that would better serve their needs.
Okay, all right. Any questions from council?
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Susan, this isn't bid out because it's a services contract?
That's correct. And let me do one, say one other thing, this is a proposal that comes from two companies, Sodium Halogen, which is William Donald, Younger Associates, and then we would also tap into any of the sources that is the co, which would be some of the new young minds, so we can bring in the latest and greatest, so we can make sure this website meets all the latest and greatest requirements in technology.
Technology, would it make the mayor and the council look any better?
Yes, it will. Yes, sir, it will.
It'd make the council look better.
But the number of hits this site gets, and the functionality that we can bring to the site, is going to be such a benefit not only for economic development recruitment, but also for the citizens of the city, because they're gonna be able to find things a little more easily and be able to do some things that they haven't been able to do prior to with the older site.
Kayla, since you already have the contract with the Chamber, there'd be a way to integrate the two websites to make it easy to transition from the Chamber to the City of Jackson, so if we have a prospective business looking at us, they can make a quick transition over without having to search for a City of Jackson.
Exactly. That would be an easy transition, and one I recommend because the Chamber keeps their economic development portion of their site, as you know, there are three entry portions on the Chamber site, one is to tourism, one is to the Chamber, and one is to economic development, which is really crucial, and it is kept up-to-date. So, if we could build an economic development portion, explain a little bit, and then link to the Chamber site for the ED part, it would be a great transition.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes.
Ma'am, does your contract include updates each year, quarterly?
to the Chamber site for the ED part, it would be a great transition.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
Ma'am, does your contract include updates each year or quarterly?
Let me explain that. What happens is we'll build a website, and once we go live with it, then each department will be trained to make their own updates. So if there was something outside of there that they could not handle, then we would be contracted on an hourly rate for whatever you needed and moving forward. There would not be an annual contract. It would, this is just, once it's live, it's in your possession, and then you can contract with us for updates or things that the staff cannot do.
Thank you.
Kayla, one question I had, the current website, you all are gonna build a new website independently of that, so I can only assume that once we're ready to launch the new website, the old one will simply blow up and the new one will be put in. Is that, is that the way it's supposed to work?
That's a good scenario. The other one will go completely away, there will be no portion of it left. Any content that's still good and valid, then it could be transferred over, but as you all know, it needs an overhaul in pretty much all content and updates and things like that. There'll be a robust calendar on the front. We're looking at maybe even putting some type of notification, like if there's a street closure or things like that, so the citizens can go to the site and immediately get information about things that are happening in real time.
Okay.
I have two questions. One, to clarify, will each department head be able to make their own updates? There won't be just one administrator from the city chosen to do that, will there?
That is exactly correct. I think there's a webmaster in place now, she can still carry on those functions, but each department will be challenged to take care of their own section because we find that's the best way to keep the information up-to-date and current because it's in real time and they can, it is all internet-driven, so wherever they are, they can make updates to the site.
Okay, and when will this be up and running?
Well, our goal is end of January, early February. And again, that revolves on a lot of different factors playing into place, and one of those key things is content, but we're gonna work diligently to make that happen.
Any other, any other questions from council?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion for approval and a second. Any additional discussion from council? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Okay, thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Item five is board appointments. On the one that Jackson Housing Authority, reappointment of Joe Alred.
Move to approval.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
To the Jackson Madison County Airport Authority, the reappointment of Tim Wilson.
So moved.
Second.
A motion, a second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
And for the advisory board at the NED, the appointment of Dr. Jerry Woods.
So moved.
Second.
A motion, a second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Okay, item six, budget amendments. Bell?
Unfortunately, there's more amendments than there were proclamations, so we'll get through them as quick as we can. The first one that you have on your agenda this evening is the 2014 Burn JAG grant from the Jackson Police Department. The city has received the 2014 Burn JAG grant. It will be equally split between the City of Jackson Police Department and the Madison County Sheriff's Department. The city's portion will be 32,637 dollars, and they're gonna use this to purchase ballistic vests, mole vests, helmet face shields, and a large-screen TV, and two twenty-inch monitors to be used for criminal intelligence and analysis unit.
So moved.
Second.
A motion, a second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Second Amendment that we have today is for the Fire Explorers Program, the amount of $2,000. The Fire Department's asking to add funding for expenses for their Fire Explorers Program. The funding will come from the excess revenue that existed between revenue and expenses when the budget was prepared.
So moved.
A motion, a second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
The third amendment that you have before you today is the ACT grant for 2014 received by the Jackson Police Department in the amount of 99,345 dollars and 15 cents. I would like to applaud Ron Adams and his division at the Jackson Police Department. In prior years, the most that they've received is 39,000 dollars, and we were one of the few cities that actually tripled the amount of this grant this year, which will allow them to be able to do more alcohol countermeasures. And this, no match required pays for the overtime for these stops.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion made and second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
The next amendment that we have today is what you've already discussed as far as the demolition costs related to the demolition of West Jackson School in the amount of 146,643 dollars. There'll be a draw on fund balance in the amount of 52,471.46. The remainder, 94,171.54, will come from the excess revenue.
Move the approval.
Second.
A motion for approval and a second discussion.
I should've asked this earlier, but do you know about how long it takes for that demolition?
That would be a Mr. Windbush question.
We'll tell you after it's, okay, that's all right.
They'll probably have partial. Go ahead.
Three months.
Three months.
Three months, okay, good, thank you.
Pretty close to ninety days.
Okay.
Okay.
Did we take a vote on that?
Did we vote?
No.
Okay, we have a motion, the second. Council, please vote.
I think you have a separate question.
And the vote is unanimous?
The next amendment that we have is an additional grant received by the Jackson Police Department. It's the 2014 Bulletproof Vest Partnership in the amount of 22,325 dollars. No match required on this, and this will be used toward the expense of bulletproof vests that's currently budgeted in the capital fund.
So moved.
Second. A motion, a second discussion, council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
The next amendment that we have today is airport capital in the amount of 15,125 dollars and library capital in the amount of 6,197 dollars. The money for the airport will be used for the airfield grading and drainage, 2,500, HVAC units, 5,000 dollars, building repairs, 7,625. The funding for the library will be used for HVAC updates. Again, this will be a draw on fund balance in the capital fund.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, discussion. Mayor, go ahead. Now, this, the library, that's a joint between county and city, correct?
That is correct. We did not have the final numbers when Madison County...
It's supposed to be two-thirds and one-third, correct?
Correct, that is correct. We just did not have the final numbers when we prepared our budget, so this is additional funding that was approved by the county.
So they do a third and we do another third, correct? Okay. Okay, we have a, have a motion, the second. Any additional discussion? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
And the last amendment that we have today is Bemis Rosenwald Grant in the amount of 2,250 dollars. As I shared with you Thursday evening, we are just acting as a pass-through agency for the Bemis Rosenwald School, and this is coming from the National Trust for Historic Preservation, so it'll pass right through. The reports will come to us and we'll file, but it's just strictly a pass-through, no match.
Okay, move for approval.
So moved.
Motion for approval, second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Before we hit item seven, let me introduce Cedric Terry, a student at UT Martin, interning with the recreation department. Thank you for being here, buddy. Good to have you with us. Item seven, final, final item, consideration of invoices over 10,000 dollars.
So moved.
A motion, a second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
There being no further business, meeting is adjourned. I have comments, sir. You made it through. You just go ahead. Young man. Young man.